Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I'm good.
Okay, I would like to call to order the planning and zoning meeting of East Dundee's, the scheduled one for Thursday, November ninth, 2025. I have six thirty P. M. So Franco, could you take the roll?
Commissioner Myers is absent. Commissioner Scarpelli appears to be absent. Commissioner Kruger?
Here.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Here.
And Chair Brunner?
Here.
Okay, with the roll called and quorum that, we may continue. So on to the first item of business, approval of minutes. May I have a motion to have it be noted, it is six thirty-one, and Frank Scarpelli has arrived?
My motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Before we vote on the minutes? Minutes as provided in the packet?
No.
Okay.
Commissioners Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. You didn't even miss a vote. Okay, so on to our next item of business, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on an agenda or non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first order of new business. This will be a public hearing. May I have a motion to open a public hearing for a request for a variation from section one five five dot zero four six C of the subdivisions ordinance as described in sections one five five dot zero zero six and one five seven dot two zero seven that requires all lots shall have full footage abouting a publicly dedicated street located at five oh seven Rock Road, drive pin zero three dash two five dash two one five dash zero zero two in East Dundee, Illinois, six zero one one eight, located in the M One Limited Manufacturing District.
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. So Franco, did we receive any contact via email or calls, or mail, in regards to this?
No.
Hearing? Okay. Next, do we have someone in the audience who will be making a presentation or petition on this?
We do have the applicant, Tim.
Fantastic. So, Tim, we'll need you to be sworn in.
Yeah. So raise your right hand, state your full name.
Tim Winter.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm Tim Winter. I represent FS Real Estate through a couple LLCs. We own all the property up there. We are currently doing a little bit of class subdivisions to divide out some of this property because we're going to build a new maintenance facility out there where Lot Two is located. It's an old garage. It's been there, I don't even know how long, as long as I've been with the company. We were leasing that to Boys Paving, who was one of our customers. But we have decided there's a need out there for another maintenance garage other than in our Hillside office, and this is a perfect location. So we're building that, and we just wanted to create a separate lot for that garage, partially for financial and loan reasons, just to keep it away from the asphalt plant. And at the same time, we would divide out the truck parking, which we came here two, three years ago, I can't remember the exact time enough time I had, for that approval. The variance is because of the private drive that we have along the south, which is light blue color-ish. We put an easement over the top of that roughly eight years ago when we built the National Tool Building that is not part of the subdivision. We always want to keep that as a private drive, just so we have more access with our operations for the asphalt plant. And we're just going to maintain that, continue to maintain that road as we do with the first and not a village responsibility. I'm not sure if there's much more I could say, but I'm going to answer any questions you guys have.
So questions for the applicant?
Can I ask Joe Heinz a question?
If you think it's relevant to clarifying questions, yeah, here, yeah. Do we need? Yeah, we'll need Joe sworn in.
Raise your right hand, state your name.
Joe Heinz.
And your title.
Village Engineer.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Joe, when the, I realize we're voting on the variance tonight, how far along is the subdivision? Are they in preliminary plat or final plat?
They are.
Okay. Were any of your initial comments to provide a dedicated street?
No.
No, okay.
Then it's not for me to decide, that's why you guys are here tonight.
Okay. So I guess for the applicant, did, I guess, why not a dedicated street?
The reason we came through with this seven years ago when we built the National Tool Building was for, to make sure we have the most flexibility for the asphalt plant. And that's kind of where we're still at. We have the easement where it's allowed to be used. The other access to National Tool is a access easement south through, I'm not sure, I can't remember the, down to Plate Street in there. And it's just, was more for, to have the flexibility of the asphalt plant if we need to change operations, work things around, just because IDOT does require different mix designs, different layouts of how we have different materials, and we've always wanted to keep that flexibility.
But when you created, when you created the, or the village pass the ordinance and you created the public utility easement through there?
Access Drive Easement.
And/or your drive, currently today, it's all one big thirty acre parcel lot. It's not, those subdivision lines, you're in the process of doing, but prior to, prior to 2024, 2025, this is all just one lot that already has access off Rock Road.
The National Tool Lot does not have access off Rock Road. It's through the private easement.
But this was a, like a sublet, non-pin location, right? It didn't, it didn't have a lot?
Yeah, Lot Two does not exist today.
Lot Two does not, but up there... Sure, I'm going to show you here.
Yep, yep.
This lot that we did six, seven years ago?
Right.
That is its own private lot.
Correct, correct. But right now, Lot Two and Lot Three are part of your overall thirty acre parcel?
Yes, roughly thirty acres.
Yeah, so I mean, what we're saying, right, is right now it is conformant?
Yeah, yeah.
With this rule.
Right. But the creation of Lot Two and Lot Three, where Lot Two has no access to Rock Road other than the easement, is a, would be a non-conforming lot. So I guess you already have the utility there. Are you just saying you, you don't want to give up the additional, Joe, or minimum, minimum dedicated street sixty feet or sixty-six?
Eighty feet and industrial.
Eighty feet and industrial? So you don't want to give up an additional fifty feet of land?
We like to have our flexibility total. I mean, Lot Two is going to have full access to Lot One at all times. We're not putting a fence up or anything. It's, it's going to be continued. It's really just because of financial reasons with the bank and how we secure property. That is the main reason we are subdividing this lot.
Okay. Although, as you develop Lot, is it Lot One or Lot Two?
Lot One, I highly doubt will ever be developed.
What's that?
Lot One is the asphalt plant that will never be devolved. That, I shouldn't say never, it's highly unlikely it'll ever be devolved because that's where the plant is. Lot Three is where the truck parking is. I do not see, in the near future, I'm not looking to do anything with that. We would like to keep the truck parking there.
Because, I mean, you made a comment just now that certain things on Lot Two will always have access to Lot One, but there will be standards, once you create a Lot Two, there will be standards on that lot for setbacks and things of that nature that you may not have as much freedom unless you come in and ask for variances on all of those things as well. As long as you own it all and control it all, I don't have as many concerns. But somewhere down the road, there will be a third party that will own Lot Two. And when they own Lot Two, my concern then, unless has, or either Joe or Franco, do we, when we have situations like this, do we ever set up SSAs to begin with? And have the, have the subdivider sign on that they're in agreement of an SSA? My fear is down the road, you don't own either of these lots. And whoever owns the truck parking lot decides not to maintain the asphalt across there. And the guy who owns Lot Two may have the right to do the maintenance and/or put asphalt down, but that road becomes in a state of disrepair, and you've got two parties owning the lots that are not you guys, it's two new guys fifty years from now, and they're fighting over who has to maintain the road and who has to do what. So I've seen some municipalities put SSAs into place with the subdivision that the, what the SS, do you know what an SSA is?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the village could come in if the road's in disrepair, they could do the work and charge the SSA.
I think because it's a private, it would remain a private road, you can't impose an SSA on it. It's only if there's a public road. I'd have to double check, but...
Well, the SSAs I'm familiar with is, is SSA is taken on private property. Because if it was a public road, you wouldn't need the SSA. You could just do the work, and yeah, maybe you want to bill off the money to, to a developer, but...
Can you tell me what an SSA is, please?
It's a special service area.
Okay.
Separate taxing district, basically.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Here in property taxes, when needed, Trump.
Just wanted to not assume and pretend I'm whatever.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine, thank you.
So the original plat, so Lot One, which is National Tool, when that subdivision, overall subdivision was platted, that ingress egress was for the benefit of Lot One and the provision state that Lot One is responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, for maintenance, no plowing of that access. So either way, there's only one party that's responsible for that roadway.
So, but, but what happens when the owner of Lot One just doesn't want to do it?
Well, that's between two private projects.
Well, I, I know, but now, we've got, the village has an ongoing business on Lot Two, and they, their access is severely limited because of disrepair of the road. And that, that's the only thing I'm trying to prevent here, or protect over, hence the SSA.
Right. Also, you're saying there was an agreement where Lot One would do it. So I mean, you're saying like Lot One's inheriting like all of the rights from the previous? Because it's the bigger of the three, or?
It was the first one. It was the first subdivided lot.
Okay, just in this new subdivision, it was the one, so it takes over that. So I guess to the, the variance for the truck parking, where the variances for the truck parking, which I'm sure there were, right?
So we have to get?
It all has, that all has to get redone for this?
Once subdivided.
Once subdivided, okay. And you were saying you were doing it because of the bank? And I thought I heard you in the beginning saying it was mainly between the asphalt plant and the factory, or is it the truck parking and the?
It's the asphalt plant. We just don't like to have our property secured by a loan that has asphalt plant on it. We like to keep the plant free and clear. That's just our business model. So since we're building a new garage, we just wanted to buy that out and secure that property to new construction.
So is there an option then for you guys to have Lot Two and Lot Three be one, that not be subdivided, just be in the Lot One, and then the second subdivision would be the combo of two and three? Because then you would be conformant.
There's, we could have done that. We just, since they're all different uses?
Yeah.
We divided just to separate them all out.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was just trying to be as clean as possible.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's not something that we, you would prefer to do it this way?
Yes.
But it's, okay. You guys have any questions down there for the applicant or for Joe?
No, I'm trying to think of some. Do you plan to sell in the future lots?
No, we have no desire. It's our, it's for our own intercompany.
And the reason they were divided, just because it's different?
Yeah, yeah, I think I've...
Because we're going to have, we're going to have construction loans to build a new building, and we don't want the mortgage on the property of the plant. Our plants are not secured by anything with banks, and we always own those free and clear. It's just, that's power. We don't ever want something coming back to those plants. They're valuable.
No more questions for me.
Okay, so I'd entertain then a motion, or may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. So let's have a little discussion. Do you want to start, or?
Well, again, my only concern is that the road becomes in a state of disrepair, and it is kind of odd to me that Lot One is going to take on the responsibility of the road where it is not, has no continuity, congruency at all.
Yeah, it's not touching it, yeah.
Right, to it, so, and the, if you check into that, because most SSAs that I'm aware of, and Joe, you may know this, is usually like in a subdivision, the detention basin, they put an SSA on the detention basin, but the village doesn't own the detention basin. It's usually a homeowner's association, or it's part of that. And it's there for the purpose of maintenance should the association or whatever fail to do whatever they need to do, or a lot of associations probably fall by the wayside and no one knows where to find the person.
It appears well...
Clarification, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's got to be, because we may have to open the public hearing again. So what do you think?
Yeah, we need to reopen.
Yeah. If you're going to say anything, we have to reopen.
Understood, just wanted to clarify this.
Okay.
Sorry.
You can open without, you just have to close.
Okay, so, okay, because I do, I do make a motion, I just, I can just... Okay, we're reopening the public.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that. So when you, I'm going to point to this one. So, yes, this is Lot One. I think what Joe was referencing earlier was this previous lot.
Lot One, right.
So this does have access in connection to this, not this Lot One. So it's actually the previous of the first subdivision. This is a re-subdivision.
Okay, so the original Lot One is the one that has to maintain the road?
Yes. Yeah, so that, sorry about that confusion there. It's the original, this is the re-subdivision of the property.
Okay, yeah.
This Lot doesn't, this Lot then is responsible for that. From the initial class subdivision seventy years ago or six...
And, and Joe, do you believe that that, that there's verbiage either recorded on the deed of that?
It's on the actual plat subdivision.
Okay, okay.
I'm not a lawyer, so...
It's in addition to the easement, correct? So it's enforceable.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not here to complain about it, so we are... They take it out.
So what would happen if they subdivided that lot?
Which lot?
Lot, original Lot One.
National Tool?
No, the, the green one.
The one that the...
That has the easement attached to it.
So if they, if they did that, they would have to come in for a variance because any new lot would still not from the village roadway.
Right, so for the one, right, the back one, right?
Yeah, the one that touches that east road.
Yeah.
Well, they could divide it such that both, they could divide this like horizontally, so it would be the one that always touches that, has to own it?
Well, no, the, anything recorded against that deed is recorded against the entire piece. So if, when the, if they subdivided it, it would still remain on the entire piece unless the two parties or whoever's buying it negotiates it off all onto the other one. So it becomes a negotiate, it becomes an objection, not an objection, what is it? An encumbrance to the, to the title of the property.
Right. So and then they're the ones responsible, this other pal is responsible for maintaining it right now? Yeah. And do they use it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's their main use of access, I think, at least for their trucks. I think some of their vehicles go out to Plate Drive after the village bought that access.
So they've got access to Plate Drive, but they still use the easement to go to Rock Road?
The access to Plate Drive was not built until the village did that four years ago? I don't know.
Twenty seventeen, I think it said.
I don't remember. It was after we built the building for National Tool.
Or do we have any other questions, or time to close again?
Sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. It was very useful, it was very useful. It added a lot of clarification.
I'll make a motion, we need to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay.
I still have my concern, but I mean, I'm willing to grant it. I'd like to pass notes on to the village board that they should look into some type of guarantee so that the, should there be a fight down the road somewhere there? I mean, it wouldn't hurt Lot Two and Lot Three to enter into an SSA, or Lot One. Well, I don't know if they can force Lot One. Now that you don't own Lot One, I don't think you can force that on them. So I, SSA might be moved.
Yeah.
Because they're not a party to this variance.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
So, either Joe, do you know, does the, does the current utility easement, well, is it, currently it's just a utility easement, or is it an access utility easement?
There's a village utility easement first you run water, and then there's also an ingress egress easement.
Ingress egress easement? And that runs from?
Rock Road back to original Lot One.
Yeah. From Rock Road back to Lot One. And do the owners of what is currently now the thirty acre lot, and that's you guys, right? I guess, can I ask them a question, or do we have to go back into the public hearing?
Let's open it, reopen it. It's a question.
Let's keep talking.
Do you have?
Reopening the public hearing.
Do, do you have the ability, if, if the people on Lot One that have the duty to maintain it, if they told you to go pound sand, do you have the right to go out and repave the road?
We own the original Lot One National Tool. We still own that, it's just under a separate LLC. So that, so it's, yes, different hands, but still under our ownership.
Would you be willing to, with the recording of the subdivision, give maintenance rights to both Lot Two and Lot Three?
I would have, I, I'd have to look into it because there's a lot of different things in there.
Okay.
I'm not opposing it, I just have to look into it further to understand a little bit, communicate with Mr. Heinz a little bit more in the village, and obviously my attorney, just to make sure we do everything the correct way. I, overall, I don't have an issue, but I just have to look into it more.
Okay, I'm good.
So...
Are you sure?
So, so Joe, are there other easements like this around in, in Rock Road? I mean, in the industrial park where we have access easements into properties?
It looks like just north of there, there is a twenty foot.
I don't know about private party easements?
Yeah.
But we're plating subdivisions, chair of business partner, I mean, I know of, because they all face...
I mean, it's just such a strong feeling, this should be a real road. It's the way it just feels like it should be.
Yeah, yeah.
I recognize that the, that's not what they want it to be, but...
Well...
But in reality, it should be.
Joe, does, does the village, does the village code allow that you're aware of alleys to be less than, less than eighty feet? Because I know, I know in Carpentersville, behind the castle apartments there, there are alleyways there that are only twenty feet wide, and those, those were dedicated to the village back in the fifties.
I guess you also have to think that you want the village to be paying for a road that's going to be, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's kind of like Lake Shore Drive over in the Lakewood Estates, we, we didn't pave all the way up to Clark's House. We only paved up to a certain point, and it's more like an alleyway because it only serves one or two people. So, yeah, it does, and the extension of Summit Avenue, I think that's a, that's a private easement, right? Where three homes have access to it?
Right, up by Roseland Summit?
Yeah, yeah, Roseland and Summit, the extension of Summit that goes north.
And Hillside, down off of Holden Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
Bonnie Dundee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I mean, we have some in residential areas where there's, there's private...
But I think some of those commercial stores along Seventy Two probably have internal ingress egress, so they could have the difference.
Yeah, so that would be on a small, like, highly unlikely to be subdivided lot. I, I'm more concerned about, you know, this, this precedent of allowing access. Is there, could this, could we be doing more of this where there's more lots, like, with no roads going to them? Which, it seems to me a good, a good rule to have roads to pins. So, I mean, maybe this is a very special situation, that this got set up this way based on when it was developed and what the roads were like when these pins were originally platted, right?
Question for the attorney. We can't put a time limit on variances, correct?
You can.
You can?
Yeah.
So it could, it could be, I mean, we, could we tie it to the development of the truck parking lot? Because I would think at the time you developed, if you developed some permanent structure on what is now the truck parking, at that point in time, you're, once you build a building there, you're going to pretty much know how that land's going to be used.
Probably, it's a good chance. A little better idea than now.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's just, when I, when I think of all of the, the reasons why this would be done, you know, it's being done for not of a land, it's being done for an isolation.
Yeah.
Other people that, you know, this is what I'm asking about in there, because this seems just like something somebody else would ask for, and I wouldn't, you know, I don't think it's a good practice in general. But, okay.
We close.
Yes, are we, are we really sure now? Really sure?
I think I am, yes.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. So I think you guys just heard kind of where I'm, I'm leaning right now, like, I mean, we heard it's, the reasoning is for, I think, insurance isolation, or to get better, or business isolation. They could have the two together if they wanted and still meet their, their major goal. I think roads to lots seem like a pretty good rule, you know, because, like you said, we're making decisions that could last fifty, hundred years, right? And we don't know what, what that's going to be, be in the future. So, you know, would they, you know, does that devalue that lot because it doesn't have a road? I mean, people won't buy it because it doesn't have a road, right? You know, I would think for the village, that lot would be more valuable with a road.
Well, the, the other thing too is any development of Lot Two or Lot Three is probably not going to be able to meet the green space setback because, but Lot Three's front yard or front would be along Rock Road. I don't know where Lot Two's front yard would be.
Well, right, because it doesn't have a road.
Right.
So we don't, that, that would be a question that you guys would have to answer. Is it all backyard, side yard, front?
Well, and, and I don't know if, Joe, do you know offhand in the industrial, is the front yard twenty feet?
No, I think it's more.
Thirty? Can, can they have parking in the front lot? They can.
Parking in the front yard except for the first ten feet.
Okay, ten foot has to be green, so, so, I, I, I mean.
To me, it's like a nonusable pit, really, back in the olden. It's, it's really not a standalone thing.
Yeah.
But if we approve this, it makes it not standalone properly. Joe, other people's thoughts?
If there's some way we could tie in the special service agreement to get that finalized, but.
Yeah, because there is.
It's rotating.
Yeah. Because this.
It's kind of unknown right now, right?
But I guess, just thinking ahead, when they, if they're granted the subdivision, and then they come in to rebuild that maintenance building. I guess, Joe, when you do the plan review for the maintenance building, the maintenance building is going to have to meet all of the new subdivision codes, so there would need to be green space setback and building setback. Now, granted, the applicant can come in and ask for a variance to it all, but right now, even the rear, the side yards are probably zero, right?
Yes, but if there's a parking lot, they have to have landscaping, let cars park in the face of adjacent property.
It says for M1 Manufacturing District, the front yard to be not less than forty feet in depth. Side yard should not be less than twenty-five feet in width, except the side yard abutting a street shall not be less than forty feet in width. Rear yards to be not less than forty feet in depth, except the rear yard abutting an alley or railroad right of way, be reduced to twenty feet.
Isn't that enough?
What's that?
He's got the variances, I mean, he knows.
Well, in order to utilize, my perspective is if we grant this, the easement, and then they come into, right now, there's an existing, it would be a non, I believe, a legal nonconforming building on the lot. If, he said that they're going to either put up a new building or tear this building down and put up a new building. The new building would have to comply to all of our current ordinances.
Of course.
And with that access at that point, they're going to have to ask for a variance on the development of.
I mean, it really, I mean, it could really, they could say it's not a street, it's not any yard.
Well, right, but they'd have to put green on it. Ten feet of it would have to be green, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know what we would classify it as, though, because it's not on a road. It's.
Right, yeah.
It's no road. It's a property boundary.
Right.
It's just a property boundary.
Right, but I think they would, I know, a corner lot has, has no, it has two front yards and two rear yards and no side yards, but I don't know what this.
This is a middle lot.
A corner would have two fronts, a rear yard and a side.
Two what?
Two fronts and a rear and a side.
Because this one, because, yeah, because this.
Oh, I always thought it was two fronts and two rears. Where do you get a side yard? If you've got two fronts, you've got two rears.
Think about a house.
I see the logic.
You've got a corner, you've got a corner lot house, and you have, you know, a hundred and twenty foot, you have to do a hundred and twenty foot line.
Okay.
Lots that get a house on them.
Yeah, side yards are about side yards.
Okay.
You know, yeah, front yards are about front yards. Yeah, so, I mean, this one, because that's, that there is a, this isn't a corner either, so there's no way that could be a corner.
Right.
Right, as defined, there wouldn't be a front yard.
Yeah.
If we're having a plat, a fifty foot setback or along that, ingress easement.
So, that's, yeah, from there, right, I mean, see, this is, this is the, right.
So, I guess if the, if the, if the development plan came into you, Joe, would you determine one of these to be a front yard?
I would go by the plat, because the plat is a legal document that I can refer to.
Okay, and I guess, right now, we're, they're in the, in final engineering, but what is the front yard here?
Well, there's no front yard, but there are building setbacks lines planted on the proposed plat subdivision, so I would use those proposed setbacks as.
Okay. And do those proposed setbacks, do they allow for green space, or it's just setbacks for the building? And I guess if the village approves the plat of subdivision with no green space setback, then, then it's not required.
Right, we would just have to refer to the landscape ordinance and make sure, right?
Yeah, and all of these other roads to the, I guess, to the south, those are just like parking lots, right?
Well, I think the road going around the back of Pell's new.
This?
Commercial.
That's a road, yeah, Platte Drive, but then this is.
Right.
But you could theoretically, like, that could be a road, this could be upgraded, right? Maybe at some point, I, you know.
Which, are you referring to the north property line?
So, I'm referring, like, up point here, like, right through here.
Uh-huh. Oh, that one.
You know, because this, this is a road, and then you could maybe, in the future, I'm just thinking.
Continue it?
Yeah, like, if they wanted to get rid of these easements in the future, whatever, and you wanted to get that lot direct access, maybe, I mean, that would be a way to do it.
You'd have to pay for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and they'd have to, I mean.
And the village, so, I mean.
You'd have to negotiate with all those other property owners.
That's right.
Yeah, so, any other discussion on this, or would you like to go through the findings of fact? Okay, so, let's take. Okay, so, first question, the property question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in this zoning district? Yeah, I think, no, I think that's accurate.
It's agreed.
Okay, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances, I would say, also.
No.
The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Or it could, I mean, may not, but it could.
Yeah, so, do we like this saying yes, then? That saying it will keep it the same?
Will not alter it.
I think, right now, there would be no difference, really, to the, to the way that it looks, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah.
So, well, I think, let's keep it at yes. Okay, the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved would bring a particular hardship upon the owner as it distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the regulations were strictly enforced. And that's no.
Yeah.
The conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. I think that, again, is no.
No.
Because what other people could exactly do this for the same reason. And we have other businesses that, properties that look kind of like this. The purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to make more money out of the property.
I would say.
Yeah.
I don't know if there was enough information or, I don't know if they'll just determine that.
Yeah, it's, I think there is, you know, we think there's some money involved in it because it's going to save money somewhere else, but it's also a, you know, they are putting specific uses in specific things. So, it's an organizational thing, and maybe that keeps their, you know, easier to manage their paperwork or, but, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking more about the reason, the reason that we should be talking about the not having a road.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think not having a road would probably be more beneficial to the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, they have more usable space.
Right.
You know, and, and more flexibility, that's what we heard in the, you know, a lot in the.
Yeah, so, that might be a yes.
What do we think? Do we want to make that a yes?
I would think that'd be reasonable. What do you guess?
I agree, yeah, I think you bring up a good point, by not doing the road. I lean towards yes.
So, that means there's other reasons than just not making money?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
That's what you're saying?
I don't know. I'm not saying anything.
What are you guys doing?
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Are you seeing this?
Yeah, I think there's, I mean, the applicant stated that they're trying to separate, separate this from the asphalt operation. It could be for insurance purposes, could be for a lot of reasons.
Right, exactly.
That's, okay, that's a good point.
Yeah, so, we keep it at no, then?
Yeah, we'll keep it at no.
Okay. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property? No, because they've owned it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, then you can go that route, too. The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare, injures to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located?
Maybe not today, but it could be in the future.
Not now.
Keep it as it is.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a tricky one, this is an interesting hearing. The proposed variation will not impair inadequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property or substantially increase the danger of fire or otherwise endanger the public safety or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. And then, yes, I think so, yes. So, it looks like we can approve the findings of fact as provided by staff, so, may I have a motion to, yeah, there you go. May I have a motion to approve the findings of fact variance for the property located at five oh seven Rock Drive, Rock Road Drive ten zero three dash two five dash two one five dash zero zero two as provided by staff in Hart Pack.
So, most.
I'll second.
Commissioner Scapelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Raisbrotter?
Yes.
Chair Brunn?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we. Yeah, okay, so, are we prepared to put forth a recommendation?
I would make a motion that we recommend the village board to approve the subdivision of Lot Two pursuant to the access easement to expire at the earlier of development of Lot Two or Lot Three of the subdivision. And that, and then at that time, and my thought would be, at that time, the applicant will then have to reapply based on their knowledge of what they're doing either on Lot Two or Lot Three. Yeah, that's good.
You made a, you made a motion to recommend the subdivision? Is this for a variation?
Well, recommend the variation for the access to Lot Two of the subdivision, of the proposed subdivision, to expire at the earlier of development of Lot Two or Lot Three. Chris?
They, they have applied for a permit to build that truck, truck maintenance facility on Lot Two. So, is that what you're considering development?
I would, yes.
Okay, well, they're, they're in for a permit to build a truck maintenance facility on Lot Two, that's why they wanted to spin Lot Two off, so they could build that building.
Okay. I, I, mine would, I guess, would still, I mean, they're going to have to get the subdivision before they build the building.
Correct.
And then the building's going to have to comply to all of the codes of.
The setbacks and.
Setback and everything else, and at that time, I think then they, they need to, I would think that that lot is pretty well set, that maybe across Lot Two, there would be a dedicated street that would later tie up with something on Lot Three. But that, that's for them to figure out.
I mean, the building will be built with just this driveway access.
So, this variation is from the subdivision ordinance, and so, in order to get the subdivision, they need the, this variation.
Right, but I guess the chronology would be, would be subdivision, and then they, once the subdivision's in place, then they would apply for the building.
They can't get the subdivision approval until they have a variation from the subdivision ordinance that requires every lot to a, or to, yeah, about a dedicated road. So, they can't make Lot Two, which they would need to do as part of the subdivision, until they have this variance.
Right, right, we're granting the variance, they can create the subdivision.
Yeah, I think, really, what you want, you want them to be able to build this first building with what we set in our recommendation. It'd be the one after that, that's really the one that would trigger the redo, right?
Well, but maybe not, because if they, if they built with the easement in place, if they build Lot Two, building on Lot Two, and then sell that off.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then Lot Three is there right now with the, with the roadway easement there, is if the owner of Lot Two says, I don't want to have the roadway access down there, I want to have the roadway access somewhere else.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have the person discuss it, or?
What's this?
Wouldn't somebody discuss it if they're buying the property, or, I mean, this is just, I'm not going to go in somewhere and buy something if I don't know the logistics of what I can use and what I can't use, is what I'm trying to say.
Right. So, are you thinking that we would just make it, the timing of it be, but, see, I guess if, when somebody goes to develop Lot Three.
That's definitely, and that's what.
Well, right, but if somebody developing Lot Three says, I don't want to have the, I don't want to have access down here, I want to have access up at the top, now, the guy who owns Lot Two is going to have to, the guy on Lot Three can hold the guy on Lot Two hostage.
Yeah, right.
For wherever that access point's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
They can't because of the easement at Lot One. See, Lot One has a right to that easement, that roadway, as part of their, their property rights, so they can't remove that easement without some kind of negotiation with Lot One.
And the village can't take over that easement and create a road? No?
They would have to, like, give it to us or sell it to us.
Yeah, they have to sell it.
Which is what the subdivision ordinance is required, and so we're asking for the variation, there has to be a variation.
Well, yeah, I guess my only modification would be is that at the earlier of development of Lot Two or Lot Three, is that over the top of the existing easement, enough property would have to be added to make it a dedicated street. So, Lot Two comes in, I mean, they get the subdivision, Lot Two comes in for the building permit, and they know that they're going to have to give up an additional fifty feet adjacent to the easement for a dedicated street, and then if and when Lot Three ever gets developed, then they give up fifty feet, and now it becomes a dedicated street off of Rock Road.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really, you know, I don't like the idea. It works for this owner, really, well. It works, it works for this owner, really, well, but,
Right, yes, I mean, I'm willing to craft that into a, into a proposal, or my next choice would be to deny it. Let the village board decide how they wanna,
Yeah, I mean, do we feel any, yeah, I mean, because the thing is, if we said, I just get this on the notes, if, or in the recording, if, if they just made the one pin that was conformed in, then they don't need the variance, they can just move ahead. So, we don't even need to recommend anything for that. So, just saying there, on the record,
Right.
That could be an option that would be followed here, that would allow the building to go up the way that it was and not need to change anything.
Yeah, I agree.
So, we can just say that, well, that's not anything we need to pass, I mean, that's like saying we,
They need to have it.
Let's approve it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so, we could, we could, yeah, you know, either way, I think I would like to have that put in with something that goes to the board. You know, have them really consider that and talk more with the applicant about it. Because, I mean, if we do allow it, it's like, why, I, I don't, I think it's, personally, I guess, I think it's a bad precedent in general, and I don't know why we would do it, other than to be nice to the property owner. I really don't see another reason why we would do it. That's, I mean, so, yeah.
But, and, I mean, right now, Joe, I guess, correct me if you think I'm wrong on this, but, right now, as we sit here today, there's nothing that prevents the applicant from taking a meets and bounds legal of Lot Two and a meets and bounds legal of Lot Three, and go down to Kane County, and he can get separate PIN numbers on those two lots without a subdivision.
Oh, okay.
Now, he can't subdivide it, he, he can't split it up, but if, 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 he wants to get, let's say that's a, let's say that's a four acre site, and he wants to make a one acre site and a three acre site for separate tax identification numbers only, not for any subdivision things. There's nothing that prevent, I mean, the county will split your, your, your house lot into, into four pins if you want them to.
So, that's an interesting.
Yeah, I think the owner was requesting a lot so they had different ownership.
Yeah, right. Right, yeah, for him to transfer ownership, he's gonna need to go through the plat of subdivision. But if it's just, if it's just to show a insurance company or somebody that this is a separate PIN from this, you, the county will split. You give them a meets and bounds legal description or whatever, they'll, they'll split, they'll give you two tax bills on, on one piece of land.
Yeah.
I did it all the time at the shopping center for, for Outlaw.
Yeah, so, I like that idea as well. So, I think you still have a motion on the, on the table.
I, due to complexity of that, I withdraw that motion.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I'm not even sure what it would be at this point.
Yeah, what was it?
So, so, maybe we do, you know, recommend, you know, denial, but then say all these other ways we think that it can be achieved, and, and let the board and staff determine what of these, you know, granting the variance or these other ones might, might make the most out of sense. Okay. So, I, I think I can do that. Okay, I would like to make a motion to recommend to the village board the denial of the variance for, of our public hearing tonight, with the additional notes that we would like them to consider having it be a single, combining Lot Two and Three to be a single lot within the subdivision, so that the property was conformant, or if it's more, more desirable by the applicant to have just separate PINs without a subdivision, so, once again, the lots are still conformant to our village code.
I'll second that.
Take the call?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brother?
Yes.
Chair Brohm?
Yes. Okay, great. Okay, and then that concludes our first order of new business, as we have no other business. Let's move on to staff reports.
January twenty-ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, there will be a public open house for the draft comp plan, comprehensive land use plan. Feel free to drop in.
What time is it?
I believe it's five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay.
At the depot, it's Wednesday, January twenty-ninth.
Okay, great.
And once, and I U gets any more feedback from the public, there'll be a public hearing for the comp plan itself before the PZHC at your February sixth meeting. And then it'll go to the board after that.
You said five-thirty, yeah?
Five-thirty to seven-thirty, yes.
And that's the public, right?
It's an open house. Yeah, for last chance.
But it's gonna be at the depot.
In the depot, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, great.
And will it be scheduled in next month's meeting, or is that, is there nothing going on next?
Well, February sixth would be the public hearing
Oh, okay.
Of the, of the comp plan.
Okay.
To make your input, your additions, and then your recommendation to the board.
All right, great, great.
Okay, anything else? Anyone else in staff, or the, yeah? Okay, great, well, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
So, move, now the second.
All in favor, voice vote?
Hearing none, motion.
No debate.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was an interesting hearing.
It was, yeah.